Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight for the P O C D meeting or workshop or informational session. Very quickly, before I kick this off, I just want to let you know where the exit doors are. They're behind you in case of a fire. They're over here on my right and there's a little one over here on the left. So please, in an emergency, please take notice where the doors are. I'm Lou Fiore from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, thank you all very much. With us tonight is Lori Whitten and the staff from Planning and Development and also our consultant presenter on P O C D, Don Poland. So after that, I'm going to turn it over to Don. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Good evening, and thank you for the very brief introduction there, Lou. I appreciate it. So my name's Don Poland. I'm with the firm of Goman York. We're based in East Hartford, Connecticut, and we've been working with the town of Enfield on the P O C D now for a little bit over a year. We've accomplished quite a bit, so tonight is gonna kind of fulfill a few... what can I say? Check a few different boxes, and I'll get to that in a minute. But essentially, this has been a collaborative effort between town staff, a steering committee that was set up to do the P O C D, the Planning and Zoning Commission with their oversight of the steering committee, and then us at Goman York ultimately providing the bulk of the technical work on the P O C D. So this is what I was getting to previously. So tonight, we're going to review what the P O C D is, the planning process that we've been engaged in, and ultimately, I'm gonna go over some of the highlights of the existing conditions research because it provides foundation and context to the plan. Then I will engage you in an activity around what's called a SWOT analysis. I'll explain more when we get there. Ultimately, then, we'll look at some of the other public engagement, surveys that we've done and the feedback we've gotten from the community. I'll also engage you in that and see kind of what your reactions are to previous public comments and if we're kind of thinking the same. And then, towards the end, I'm gonna go through some of the draft policies that we've created so far, and it's an opportunity, once again, for you guys to provide input as to do you agree with kind of the direction in which we're heading, and do you have recommended kind of changes, or is there something we missed? From a kind of how we function tonight, I will be pausing at times to give you guys an opportunity to engage on some simple things. If it's a question you have, feel free to raise your hand. Kind of wait for one of my pauses, just since we're kind of spread out here across the room. If it's a more complex... in that sense, if it's something simple, I'll come towards you, and you can ask me, and I'll repeat to the audience. If it's a more in-depth comment or question you may have, I'd ask you to come up to the microphone that's here in the center. So with that said, Plan of Conservation Development is what's referred to as a comprehensive plan. It's required by state law, Section 8-23 of the Connecticut General Statutes, and the community has to update their plan every 10 years, and that's essentially what we are doing here. The plan itself is a statement of policies, goals, and standards for the physical and economic development of a municipality. It's the commission's recommendations for the most desirable uses of land within the municipality. That can be residential, recreational, commercial, industrial, and other purposes. And it's also to designate and promote or coordinate development of the municipality and the general welfare of the community. I like to think about the plan this way. I think it's a very simple way of thinking about what exactly it is we're doing. If we're talking about land use and the future development of the community, then kind of what we want to do is determine what's most important to us as a community. And then, essentially, we go through a process, and it's kind of the process we followed in working on this plan, and that is to first identify the natural resources, the natural environment that most needs protecting. So you kind of do the conservation and preservation stuff first. What are we gonna protect? Once you know what you're gonna protect, you can then start discussing where are you gonna develop: residential, commercial, industrial, mixed use. And once you know what you're protecting, and then you know what you're developing, you can then ultimately make decisions about the infrastructure: roads, rail, sewer, water, and the community facilities, buildings like this, town hall, police, education, and so forth. So it's that kind of what are we gonna protect? What are we gonna develop? And then, what are the infrastructures and facilities we need to support that development? Not gonna go through everything here, but kind of the basic approach we've taken is a five-step planning process, asking where we are today. That's the existing conditions. What's going on? Where do we want to be in the future? How will we get there? So the where we want to be in the future is kind of the vision for the community moving forward. The how are we gonna get there are the policies and strategies, which I'll be introducing to you tonight. And is what we're doing working? Kind of thinking about how can we measure our progress going forward? And then last is implementation. My two little graphics on the right-hand side, I know they're a bit small, but the one on the left is a bunch of arrows pointing in different directions, and it says Governance Without Planning. If we don't plan, then our decision-making is kind of arbitrary. It's whatever we feel in the moment. With planning, governance with planning, on the right-hand side, we have arrows going in a similar but not the same direction. In planning, we often like to talk about the idea of consensus. We have to come to consensus to make a decision. With a community of 40-plus thousand people, I think we can quickly agree that we're never gonna come to consensus, that all of us are never gonna agree 100% on everything. So the idea of those arrows are, the idea for me of planning is to create a plan to get us going in generally the same direction, but recognize there will be differences in our perspectives moving forward. So, some existing conditions. We take a look at demographics, socioeconomics, and a whole bunch of data to try and understand what's going on in the community. These tables on the left are just there to kind of look good, but it was our analysis of kind of employment, employment sectors, and, you know, we see... I know it's hard for you guys to read, but some of those largest sectors in the middle there, on the left-hand one, are government services, so government being a top employer, health and social services being another large sector and so forth. So this kind of look at what is going on in the job market. On the right-hand side is recent census data on population change, and for me, as someone who does this, this data kind of makes me start to question things, or kind of maybe, I don't want to say sets off a red flag, but kind of makes me go, ooh, is this something we should be concerned about? So the top graphic is total population of Enfield, and from 2010 till 2020, Enfield lost 6% of its population, 2,500 persons. I'll talk more about the projections on the next slide. The second table down is adult population, so that's 18 and older, and since 2010 to 2020, Enfield has lost almost 1,300 persons. That's 4% of the adult population. And then the bottom one is under-18 population, and from 2010 to 2020, Enfield lost 1,200 persons, or 14% of its under-18 population. Comparatively to Connecticut and Hartford County, total population grew by 1% for Connecticut over this time and 1% for Hartford County. Just to provide context, 1% growth is not a lot of growth demographically. Connecticut and the Hartford region have been really a slow-growth location within the country overall. Adult population grew by 3 and 4%, or 4% for the state, 3% for the county, and that signifies that we're aging. We are getting older as a population overall. And when a population ages, things kind of change. Older households spend less money in the community than younger households. Older households tend not to have children, which younger households do. So this population data starts informing us a bit about a community. And then statewide, we lost 10% of persons under 18 years old, and county-wide, we lost 9%. As I said before, Enfield was 14%. As we age, we have fewer children, so therefore, on a state level, on a county level, and on a local level, we're seeing substantial contractions in young person populations. Population projections for Enfield by the state data center and other sources that we checked against is that population will continue to contract. So approximately 43,000 persons today, and the projections say by 2040, Enfield will contract to about 40,000 persons, so the loss of another 3,000. On the right-hand side of this slide is a graphic that's called a population pyramid. Blue is the male population on the left. Green is the female population on the right, and each one of those bars is a five-year age cohort. So 0 to 4 at the bottom, then 5 to 9 years old, 10 to 14, and we work our way all the way up to 85-plus. If you take the wide bar at about 55 years of age there, and you go up from that point, you will notice... sorry. You will notice... trying to see if I have a pointer here. That's all right. So from 55 to 59 and up, you'll notice the shape of that graphic is a pyramid. That if we went back 55 years ago and made that 0 to 4, you'd have a lot of children at the bottom, and you'd have very few old people at the top. Hence the name "population pyramid." At the time when this graphic was created, all populations looked like a pyramid, and it's a high-growth shape demographically. Large number of children, high death rate, and old people die off before they're old, and you end up with this pyramid shape. As time goes by, for reasons of education, economics, and so forth, what we find... oh, and then advances in like medical technology. In Western societies, in places like the United States, we live longer than we've ever lived before, and that means that the structure of population changes. Below 55, we see an indentation down to about 35 to 39. It plumps back out down to about 25, and then we see it contracting at the bottom, and that is a reverse pyramid at the bottom. And that's why you've lost 14% of your under-18 population. The fact is that contraction in the middle of the 40- to 54-year-olds, that's Generation X, that's my generation, we were a smaller population generation, and we also... so we didn't generate as many children, but we also changed from the baby boomers before us, and we actually didn't want to have a lot of children. Behind us is the millennials, and even though they're a big population, you see that kind of bulge there, the fact is they're having even fewer children than Generation X did. And that's why you see that contraction at the bottom, and that's why those projections moving forward to 2040 say you're gonna lose 3,000 more persons, because the old people up top are gonna die. I don't say that cruelly. It's just, you know, what occurs, and we're not gonna replace them with as many people at the bottom. You're probably wondering, so what? Or thinking, who cares? But it starts informing us about government and government services. On a big picture, say at the federal level, the fewer people... the more people you have who are older, the more government dependency there is: Social Security, Medicaid, and so forth. You know, people used to retire at 65 and die by the time they were 75. You only had to support them for 10 years. Now we live longer and longer. Social Security can be supporting that person for 20 years, 30 years, or more. So that pyramid starts informing us about government services. On the local level, the more old people you have, the more senior services you need from a community facilities and programming standpoint. The fewer children you have, the less educational services you need from an education standpoint. So that population structure informs us about the community. We can see since 2008, you've lost about 1,300 students in your school system, hence the reason why this building is no longer a school, and while there's other buildings that are no longer a school. You're not alone. Hartford County has been losing enrollments, and statewide, since I think 2008, we've lost 61,000 public school enrollments over the past kind of 12, 13, 14 years or so. So this is a statewide trend. In some communities, it's more pronounced, as I would say here in Enfield, and in some communities, it's less pronounced. We also look at income. You guys, income-wise, you really run right with the state median. Pretty much no different. Also, take a look at things like commuter patterns, grand list, to try and get a grasp on things. So the graphic on the right-hand side is commuter patterns. 18... or almost 19,000 Enfield residents a day leave Enfield to go to their job. 4,000 stay in town to go to their job, and about 14,000 persons from other communities come into Enfield to go to their job. So you can see that maybe your daytime population is not the same as your nighttime population, that at 12 noon on a Wednesday, there's probably 3,000 fewer people in Enfield than there is at 12 o'clock on a Saturday. Now, that doesn't count the shoppers or people doing other errands coming in and out, but just from a workforce daytime population versus a workforce nighttime... or a population nighttime population. Top-left grand list, to do... oh, on the top-left grand list is your top taxpayers. What stood out to us here is the fact that, and I put them in bold, they don't show up great here, but your number two, your number three, your number five, six, seven, and 10th largest taxpayers are all retail. It's good in some ways. You've got a lot of commercial activity in Enfield, and your commercial businesses are paying a lot of taxes, which reduces your residential tax burden. But what do we know about retail? It's been struggling in recent years. Bricks and mortar has struggled as e-commerce has become more popular. All these things end up relating together. So then, as we know, the Enfield Square Mall has struggled, and therefore, the value of that property has depreciated and will likely continue to depreciate, which harms your grand list, which harms your tax base. So in some ways, I look at this, I'm not trying to be all blooming doom, but just kind of, you know, you have a lot of your eggs in one basket, and that's retail, and it's a weaker sector. So we have to at least recognize that. At the bottom, this comparative analysis of the percent of your grand list between property taxes, in blue, residential, commercial, industrial, and public utility, versus the percent of motor vehicle, and orange, versus the percent of commercial personal property taxes, and then other sources. And what we find is East Hartford, Enfield, and Hartford County, you guys are pretty much the same as your neighbors. About 65% or 60% of the grand list is coming out of real estate property taxes, and then other sources making up the rest. We went through, I only showed some examples here, but did extensive mapping of natural resources. Here, we're showing protected open space on the left, wetland soil types on the right. The next slide has what's called the Natural Diversity Database. This is a database maintained by the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and it's where there's critical habitats. It may be, you know, some type of plant. It could be some type of animal. It could be some type of wetland, but essentially, critical habitats that have some level of significance and are worthy of protection. And then on the right-hand side, we have farmland soil types. I believe there was about 11 other maps that we did related to environmental conditions. So with that, I'm now in this section... the first slide, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit. Second slide, I'm gonna introduce an activity, and then the third slide, I will engage you all in a discussion. But first, I want to talk about this idea of what I call gives and gets. It's very easy to be opposed to things, and as someone who's been doing this now for almost 30 years, I've sat through a lot of contentious land use meetings, planning meetings, and also application meetings. And it's very easy to be opposed to things, but planning is really about being constructive. So I like to think in terms of this idea of gives and gets, that in government and in life, there are really no free rides. If you want to get something, you most likely have to give something, which puts us in this place of kind of compromise in the recognition that you can have two valid opposing goals, right? So to think more about this, a give can be time, volunteering on a board and commission as so many of you do, effort, hard work that you put in, or a give can be money. It can be taxes, right? In the context of gives and gets, what are you willing to give in order to get what you want? For example, are you willing to pay more taxes, that's the give, for more or better government services? You know, you can't have more ballparks or better ballparks or better schools or more senior services without likely putting out more tax dollars. I'm not in the business of telling communities you need to spend more money, even though sometimes I do. I don't like when I have to do that, and I'm not here to do that with you, but I'm just trying to make that point that really, there's no free ride, that if you want something, you have to work for it, you have to pay for it, you have to engage in it. So to get more taxes, are you willing to allow more economic development to better fund those government services? Maybe, maybe not. We don't know, but that's what we're trying to get at in some ways. Are you willing to allow more multifamily, the give, to stem the population decline, to create a more diverse housing stock? That could be a way of looking at a give and a get. In that, though, I also need you to think about things that are non-negotiable. I recognize there's some things we're not willing to give. If you asked me to give you $100 right now, I'd say no. That's a non-negotiable. I'm not giving you my money, right? In the context of your community, do you have non-negotiables? Things that you are unwilling to give up? Maybe it's things like community character. Maybe it's things like pickleball, that no matter what, you want the pickleball program to remain. You know, it could be anything, but what are those non-negotiables? With that in mind, I think we can start thinking critically about how we balance the needs of a community, and I give the steering committee on the P O C D a lot of credit of putting up with me over the past year in trying to work through these difficult issues of how we strike that balance. So I now want to engage you guys in an activity, and I have an ulterior motive to this. It'll be revealed two slides from now, but we're gonna end up on the next slide for a little bit. It's what's called a SWOT analysis: strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And basically, I'm gonna ask you, I'll explain these a bit more, but I'm gonna ask you to express to me what are Enfield's strengths? What are its weaknesses? What do you view as opportunities, and what do you view as threats? So strengths are attributes or characteristics of the community that provide Enfield with a competitive advantage and are helpful in achieving desired outcomes. Weaknesses are attributes of the community that place Enfield at a competitive disadvantage and are harmful to us achieving desired outcomes. Opportunities, conditions, or things that may be exploited to Enfield's advantage versus threats which may cause harm or prevent Enfield from achieving desired outcomes. So anyone want to share with me, we'll start with strengths. Things that they think are Enfield's strengths. Sure. Yep. We're getting there. We're... we're... right, because I'm still trying to gain public input. I don't determine what we've done up until this point as a fait accompli, that we're still engaging the public. I could've come here tonight and told you, this is what we're doing, the steering committee, but we're not there yet. When we get to the draft plan, we'll be there.
But the whole concept is based on desired outcomes.
Yep.
It's hard for me to say what our strengths are when I don't know what... they may be my desire, but they may be that of someone else's. I couldn't say what our strengths are. I don't know what... they may be my desire, but they may be that of someone else's. I couldn't say what our strengths are. Some person's strengths is another person's weakness.
I get that, and that gets back to that idea that I introduced of consensus. I want to know what you think the strengths are. it... hold on, if I could just finish.
It's great location.
Okay. Great location. That's a good one. That's great.
But it may attract things here that are less than desired.
So then, that would be a threat.
To both.
Right. So it can simultaneously be a strength, and it can also be a threat. And as we go around the room and get varying perspectives, we can then kind of collectively learn about the community and glean what are... how this community views itself in the context of strengths and weaknesses. I'm sorry, Ms., go ahead. You were the first one with a hand.
But it's location.
Okay.
The next is the highway. We have the gateway to the north, located between New York and Boston. It's great for companies to be there.
Okay. I love that phrase, gateway to the north. Many have talked about location. Yes? Oh. Sorry. Actually, that's not a bad idea. Thank you. And I was gonna... I was gonna ignore you as staff. I'm glad I didn't. Maybe the reason not to come this way again.
Oh, I'm next.
You're next.
Okay. So I'm gonna give you a strength, which I think is our riverfront. I've always...
A riverfront.
Yeah, we do. We have two riverfronts going, you know, and I think that's probably one of Enfield's strongest, and I agree with the lady back there who said 91 corridor. I mean, we are in a perfect location between Boston and New York.
Right.
And we also have an international airport, not in Enfield, but in a very close proximity. So to me, those are our three strongest strengths.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
And we have a train station and we have some viable farmland still.
Excellent, so train station, viable farmland. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. I'm trying to stay away from that speaker.
We have a lot, we have a lot of diversity in town.
Okay. Diversity? Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I think we have a strong sense of community in this town.
Okay, strong sense of community. With a lot of agreement, anyone else? I'll take this as the last one and we'll move on to weaknesses.
I have an untucked community college.
Okay, the community college is a strength. So what about weaknesses? I'm going to pick on you, sir. Yeah.
Actually, I would say, as you know, the key thing that I would do is we're working within a system that's kind of been layered over the years. And if I look at the maps, for example, there's an effort here to have some conservation areas, right?
Yep.
But if you look at percentage-wise, so much of this land is already spoken for as I want or industrial park or commercial or retail. Or so, so we have, we're working within a framework that kind of boxes us in more than we would like to acknowledge sometimes.
I think that's a very astute observation and there's limits to it, so... You know, as I, as I said early on, identify the things you want to protect, the things you want to develop, and then the infrastructures to support them. With the age of Enfield and the amount of development you have, that overall land use structure isn't going to change dramatically at this point. But it's a weakness. But we can hopefully tweak things, make adjustments to maybe better do some conservation or other things moving forward. But I agree, it's a weakness. Yep. Yep, and we're trying to get there. Anyone else on weaknesses?
I think one of the weaknesses is that we do not have looking out for food production in this area. The way the world is changing, the problems with fertilizer, with transportation. We have some of the best soil in the world, right here in Enfield. And if we allow that to go into other uses besides producing food, we're very short-sighted, in my opinion.
Okay, so the threat to agricultural soils as a weakness?
I think right now, Enfield is lacking a gathering space. If you look at most communities, they're, they're working on a true downtown again. We're trying to bring back that downtown, which I think we're working hard in our Thompsonville area to do that. And I think that is one of our weaknesses right now. I'd like to see a gathering area. And I think that would be good.
Excellent, so I'll just elaborate on that. I think gathering area is a great phrase. I think lack of a maybe community focal point, lack of a conventional main street and so forth, definitely. Other hands for weaknesses? Everyone's always so eager on the strengths. The weaknesses become tough because you have to be critical of yourself.
Because one of the weaknesses I think we have is that we're not necessarily consistent in our decision-making for, in terms of the government that's, you know, providing us guidance. In terms of, it appears that we do flip-flops depending on, you know, different, you know, powers that come into being. And theoretically, if everybody's looking over for what's the best solution for Enfield, there should be more consistency in our decision-making. And that, you know, basically, it also relates to, you know, the direction that businesses come into Enfield. In terms of, if you treat all the businesses consistent, the businesses know what to expect. If you treat one business different than another business, there's no continuity and they don't necessarily want to invest in Enfield.
I guess for me, I think Enfield has to be more willing and open to change. Just because we haven't, we've done it for a hundred years doesn't mean we need to do it a hundred and one years. We have to be willing to change and to adapt to new situations.
Thank you. Change is very difficult, very challenging for us as individuals and as a society. I'll be right back to you. I had another hand up here.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to say that I came in late and I apologize. I don't know if you got to this part yet. I looked over the presentation online. And I was surprised to see that our current P O C D specifically has all these critical initiatives for historical, agricultural, and wetlands. And yet, I don't see that being reflected in the town right now in town decisions. So we need to give this some teeth. And how can we do that? There's, we're... For one thing, if you want to protect farms, then we've got to have farming in the zoning. We've got to have historical in the zoning. How can we change that? With land that's already out there. You know, we've got prime farmland we're losing every day, like this lovely lady mentioned. And the future is not about bringing in goods from somewhere else. It's being self-sufficient so we can help each other and help our surrounding communities. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's, let me just tell a quick little story. I'll do one more on the weaknesses and then move on. Planning is easy in some ways. It's not easy, but in some ways, it's easy in comparison to implementation. Implementation is where the hard work begins. I was working with a community years ago. We had gone through a very lengthy twenty-month process of adopting a plan. And I remember when the Planning Commission voted to approve, there was this giant sigh of relief simultaneously from all seven commission members. Ah, we're done. And I just looked at them like, no, no, you're just getting started. You just adopted a ten-year plan with an implementation schedule. Now the tough work begins. And unfortunately, and Enfield's not alone, all those things laid out in the last plan then become, you know, challenging moving forward to implementation. I'll be a little critical about the last plan in that there were very long laundry lists that make it, from my perspective, overwhelming. We're going to try and hone in on kind of priorities through this plan.
Yeah, I just want to pick up on the public space point and say, it goes beyond a single central place in a community of more than forty thousand people. You know, it strikes me that we need little humble but comfortable public spaces, be they parks or cafes or more walking paths that really connect the neighborhoods. And we also need communication channels. And, you know, God bless the newspapers and the various Facebook groups that do what they do. But I've, I've been in Enfield for about twelve years. And on the one hand, I know there are people in this room who went to high school together, who are now in their sixties, who know each other well. But there are also, when I walk down my street, I heart, I know three or four neighbors. And I think, you know, I have a neighbor that I know is getting frail and doesn't feel comfortable asking for support. And I think there's something about the social fabric of everybody in single-family houses that makes it difficult for people who don't have relationships, don't know each other well, to connect with each other. And I think that all the stuff that was brought up about resilience and self-reliance and all that stuff, I couldn't agree with more. And the first step in that and in being able, you know, to make change is having relationships.
Thank you. I shut the remote one off to the one that's on me, so... Very quickly, I want to do, just in the interest of time, I'll take three opportunities first and then three threats later. So what do you guys view as opportunities? I'm going to lean on this side of the room a little bit since I've been heavily over there.
Thank you. So opportunities, I think this might be a good example to throw in, like redeveloping existing space. I think the town has a good balance of what we have now, but like people brought up, we're, you know, expanding certain things, you know, whether it's new distribution centers and stuff like that versus taking empty spaces, whether it's the mall, whether it's schools that aren't used, maybe redeveloping those. You know, obviously, going back in the history of the town, there's like the, you know, the carpet mills. They'll shut down, they got repurposed as apartments and office space. So in terms of exploiting things to achieve better outcomes, maybe looking at that approach rather than breaking ground on new construction, look where there's a current building or a structure or something not being utilized and reutilize that.
Excellent, thank you. Other opportunities?
I know it was mentioned as a strength before, but I see it more as an opportunity, the upcoming train station, transit-oriented development, and the opportunity to continue rebuilding Thompsonville. And just making it, you know, more, you know, the opportunity of mixed use, mixed commercial, residential, kind of building on that.
Excellent, thank you. Train station, definitely an opportunity. Anyone else? Yeah, I'll go here.
Okay, so the opportunity is what Donna said, change. And we have an opportunity to perhaps change our zoning, to look more favorably at preserving our agricultural land in the eastern part where we are now. I mean, we've had two public hearings, two big developments with very controversial in the Misty Meadow right across the street and over at Shaker Pines. And, and we have all these trucks driving across our town putting a lot of wear and tear on our roads. And I think having a negative impact on our quality of life. So I think that's the opportunity.
Excellent, thank you. The distribution centers and the trucks are definitely a challenge. I just want to make two comments, just big picture. And it's something that the Planning and Zoning Commission's paying a lot of attention to, the Steering Committee's paying attention to. I like my other microphone better. One is, for better or worse, I'm not judging here, the change, the arrival of of the distribution centers is direct, as I said, things are connected, directly related to that change in the retail environment. The move to e-commerce and our behaviors. My girlfriend laughs at me because UPS, FedEx, or Amazon Prime show up at our house daily from her perspective. It's not daily. But I do most of my shopping online, orders are always showing up. So this is a greater change in society. Wall Street Journal just had an article, I think last week, on the negative reaction of communities with distribution centers. So on a national scale, you're not alone. And on a local scale, other communities in the Hartford region are having the same struggle. I can't guarantee you we're going to have all the solutions in this plan, but we're definitely gonna try and come up with some. So threats, we could probably throw that into the threats column also. Does anyone have a threat? Okay, development as a threat? That's one. I should have borrowed my girlfriend's Fitbit tonight.
To Melissa's point, I do agree, there's a communication. But I've lived in my neighborhood for forty-four years. I knew every single neighbor in my neighborhood. We are living at a time right now where people don't come out of their houses. They just don't. I agree with Dawn. Most people do their shopping online and have it delivered. And the COVID pandemic emphasized that even more because we were told to keep our footprint small. Don't leave your house. Have your groceries delivered. So I think that's one of our biggest threats is how do we get back to communicating with our neighbors? Reaching out, feeling comfortable, going to the small businesses again? That, to me, is one of our biggest threats.
Excellent. I just read an article on kind of that idea of us retreating into our households. And it's a shift that was actually occurring before COVID, but it's intensified with COVID. Anyone else on the threat?
I'm sorry, I've got to say this. This is an opportunity. I don't like to think negative. I always try to focus on the positive. Because I feel like if you folk, if, when you drive, if you, you go where you're focused on. If you're focused to the side of the road, you go to the side of the road. So I just want to say that, yes, we have less people. I'm wondering if part of that is because of the prison closure? No? Okay, that's good.
Let me answer that very quickly because it came up in our subcommittee, our Steering Committee, and I said that I would get a look at it. We don't have the full-blown 2020 census data yet. They only released enough to do the redistricting, so I'm dealing with limited data. But that being said, what I'm seeing within the limited data is it's not, it's not being driven by the contraction in institutionalized populations. It is a trend in the population overall, I'm pretty confident.
Well, I just want to say that Enfield already has like a lot of tax money to work with. And if we can finesse it so that we're using it properly, that would be great. We have five fantastic fire departments in town, but we need to consolidate them. And because we're paying for all these trucks that we don't, that even a big city doesn't need, we can utilize these funds better, get a unified department that really gets along and cooperates out there and shares resources. I see this as a great way to get funds to do all this great stuff we want to do as a community.
So can I ask a question back at the same time as putting words in your mouth? The way you started that with talking about population declining, are you seeing that as an opportunity that maybe we can be a better Enfield at a smaller size? Is that what you were saying in some ways, or no?
Well, I know that that's part of our town.
Okay.
Having that big property there. And maybe they'd be willing to, if it's not being used, maybe they're willing to give it over to some other use.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to try and understand better. Thank you. So my next slide, and this was my ulterior motive, not that it's a bad ulterior motive. Oh, I didn't advance my slides. So the SWOT analysis. Sorry, I can't see my keyboard. The SWOT analysis was organized like that. That's what we just did. What I wanted to do, and this gets to the gentleman's first comment about concerns over this, is I'm trying to take in information. So this is the SWOT analysis that we did in a virtual meeting like this back a year ago in April. And it's interesting, having listened to your comments. If we look at strengths, location was kind of the number one strength that was put forth at the meeting last year. And I'm still hearing it from you today, between Hartford and Springfield. I know it was said between, you know, New York and Boston, but gateway to the north... I know it was said between, you know, New York and Boston, but gateway to the north, I think was the phrase. You guys are right between Springfield and Hartford. Proximity to the airport, the riverfront, the rail line and the train station. On weaknesses, resistance to change, lack of access to the riverfront, lack of sidewalks, not sideways, my apologies, on bike lanes, PCC not reflecting residents, vacant retail, unattractive gateways downtown in Thompsonville. Maybe those didn't match up as well as the strengths, but we still heard some of those in here. So then opportunities, new train station, regional shopping center, upgrading existing housing stock in Higgins Park. I didn't take as many comments, but we got the train station in there as matching. And then threats, competing for new businesses, underinvestment, disinvestment, traffic congestion, encroachment of industry on residential. Kind of interesting there, we didn't, well, we did hear the kind of concern about change in industry and the distribution centers, maybe not phrased the same way. My point being is, a year later with a different audience, or at least some of you being a different audience, I know there's an overlap in some of you also, we're getting similar answers. And now, we've also done two other surveys. We did a large online survey. Oh, we also did other exercises last time that with this format of a room, I couldn't do tonight. But before I get to that, just, we've done other surveys. And we're able to look at, our first survey, we had over 500 respondents online. We now did a very focused survey on community facilities and we had 167 responses. My point being is, the community, you guys here tonight, people a year ago, people online in these surveys are giving us data points, they're giving us information to help us understand the community. So I put the last audience last year through this exercise that I call continuums of place. I hate yes or no answers. I hate black and white. I like things to be muddy and I like things to be somewhere in between. And this idea of continuums of place kind of juxtapose things against each other that helped me get a feel for where a community is along maybe the continuum of an issue. So I'm not going to go through all these, but I've put red arrows on some of the ones I just want to focus in on from answers from a year ago. And that is, do you want less or more development in Enfield? This question was kind of lightly answered compared to some others, but it was leaning towards the more development side. I'm not saying that's where we're going, I'm just presenting things. So then this question number six, do you want more retail and office or more industrial development in Enfield? And a year ago, once again, we see kind of leaning a bit more to the industrial side. Does Enfield need more or less preserved open space? Here we see a very heavy lean from the neutral all the way to the more open space. This was actually a theme throughout to some degree. In another survey though, it lessened, and I'll get back to that. Do you want more commercial development in Thompsonville or Hazardville? You know, overwhelmingly leaning towards Thompsonville. Do you want more open space? Do you want open space to be more passive, no facilities, or more active, walking, bike trails, playgrounds? Overwhelming tilt to the more active. This is very kind of, this question was very reaffirming for me in the sense that most of the literature out there on recreation and community facilities is this shift towards the active away from the passive. That's why we've seen so many bike trails and walking trails developed in communities across the state and across the nation. We get outside and do things. We may not be social and congregating together, but we get out and actually do things more than we ever have previously. Are you willing to pay more taxes for passive and active open space? Strong support, at least in this activity, for open space. A few others, should Enfield encourage more or less families, including school-aged children? Very much so said more, but in questions about housing, the one above, should housing be more or less affordable in Enfield? And actually, that's not a good one. There were some other ones on housing. There were some negative comments about housing. We don't want more housing, we don't need more housing and so forth. That, what I think is underlying the threat of school-aged children. Yet at the same time, this idea of wanting more families, including school-aged children, weighing strong. All the answers aren't clean cut. You know, we're getting different feels and vibes here. What's more important, development or more land preservation? This one was interesting to me, a very neutral kind of status quo response, not leaning in either direction very much. And then, should Enfield Square Mall remain as a retail site or become multifamily residential? This was interesting, and we did this due to, we only asked this question in another survey, and we got an overwhelmingly kind of against retail. So then we added this number 23 question of not just juxtaposing the mall against multifamily, but juxtapose it against a mixed-use development with commercial and residential. And you can see a shift in how the answer occurs here. My point being with all of this is about how we're being informed and how my job is challenging, trying to decipher and understand where the community is and what you're willing to do and what it is you want. Thankfully, I have the insights of the Steering Committee that know your community better than I ever will and can help me when I get off track. We did another activity around resource allocation. If you're, if you controlled and oversaw Enfield's budget, what would be your top three funding priorities? I often ask this in the kind of, if I were a czar for the day, what do I actually get to do? But here, kind of trying to get an idea of what the community wants to spend on. And here, I was actually surprised with this. The top three were economic development, transportation, infrastructure, parks and recreation. I'm not sure I expected economic development to come in number one. That's why I was a little bit surprised there. But ultimately, providing us a data point. Our survey in April, and this is kind of, this was the big online survey with 512 respondents. This is just a summary of, I think, what were some of the themes. In the context of government and governance, residents want to be represented and heard, good governance and policies desired over politics, investment in hard and soft infrastructures, programs and facilities. That people want a vibrant community, residents want things to do, events to go to, activities to serve the community of all ages, activities as amenities of place, this kind of, how do we identify with the community based around activities? Parks and recreation, protected green space rated high, active and passive recreation within parks. The Connecticut Escantuck River access has been a recurring theme throughout this process. And here, one of what's been expressed even tonight, this idea of stopping greenfield development. Housing in neighborhoods, now this was different. In some of the activities from last April, those engaged in the activities weren't very supportive of affordable housing. Yet in this larger survey, there was more support for affordable housing. So we start seeing places where maybe we have some conflicting answers. Protecting residential neighborhoods, I think once again, this ties right into the, you know, concern over the distribution centers and industrial developments related to that greenfield development up top. Other things were commercial and economic development, fill the vacancies, the redevelopment first, as the gentleman said, address the mall property, lot of support for addressing the mall property, little consensus, even though I'm using that word I don't like, little consensus as to how to actually address it. I think there is pretty strong consensus on improving Thompsonville and the desire for a downtown experience, Main Street, that gathering place, whatever it is you want to call it. Infrastructure, investing in community facilities, roads, train stations, and investing in parks and recreation, outdoor activities and trails. A little concern for me in this survey was this kind of theme of a distrust of government that I thought was maybe leaning towards the unhealthy a bit and an us versus them attitude, which I think has also been expressed in some ways here tonight. I'm gonna, this was just some further on it, in the interest of time, I'm gonna skip over that. Because I want to get to the policies. So we recently, and I'm still going through it and making sense of it, but we recently did an online survey for community facilities. We had 167 responses to that. I just wanted to share two of the question results. How important is the quality of appearance and functionality of Enfield's municipal administrative, public safety, library and schools to you? And the highest vote getter was very important. The second highest was important. This question rated much stronger than I anticipated. I still have to feel that out against other questions. And then the second one, Enfield should invest more in community facilities, buildings and parks. 64 respondents strongly agree and 64 respondents agreed. And 54 were neutral and then strongly disagree was 20 and not sure was 15. Once again, another question that just kind of jumped out at me is a stronger response than I expected to see, but we're still going through the data. So the Steering Committee's been working for a year now, plus or minus, a little plus. Meeting monthly, we've gone over existing conditions, demographics, socioeconomics, market conditions, some of what I highlighted. We've discussed sustainability and resiliency. We still have a little more to do on that. Natural resources and conservation, just got some good feedback in, some of those boards and commissions to build upon that. You'll see it in the priorities. We discussed housing characteristics and did a housing needs assessment, economic development, community facilities, and still a little work to do on infrastructure, but started with it. We have a preliminary plan narrative for kind of the first half of the plan that was drafted, reviewed. The committee beat me up a little bit on it, not necessarily enjoying it that much, so it's back to the drawing board. And we're reworking that as I speak here tonight. So we're getting there. So I'm gonna go over kind of generally some of this stuff. Not every word on these pages am I gonna read or else you'll get bored with me. But some highlights as to policies and strategies that we're honing in on related to natural resource protection and conservation. And I'm gonna go through some of them, and then if you guys have anything to add, I'm willing to take a few comments kind of on each of these slides for some further input. So floodplain regulations. Acquiring flood-prone properties as a potential strategy. And the more detailed flood study, the FEMA maps are very inaccurate based on their age. So updating that as a potential. Inland wetlands, public awareness and education as to the importance of wetlands. A guidebook for the creation, restoration and mitigation of wetlands. More detailed wetlands mapping. Ranking wetlands by value and work to increase the amount of wetlands protected as kind of a general look at potential policies and strategies related to that. For aquifer protection, better integrated and adopt, better integrated, sorry, I didn't correct that. Aquifer protection provisions within the zoning regulations. Stormwater management, incorporating low-impact development or low-impact designs, things like the utilization of drainage swales versus pipes to reduce stormwater runoff and the negative effects of pollution and so forth. Better addressing development in sensitive areas, those natural diversity databases, the critical habitats. There's been a movement in communities to adopt specific regulations related to that data set, which we could include in zoning. Confronting climate change, climate change initiatives and aid in reducing climate change. Reevaluate zoning regulations related to climate change impacts. Partner with land trusts to preserve and purchase properties to aid the town to reach the amount of open space goals. That's actually consistent with some other ones. Tree replacement policy, alternative energy sources, alternative prioritaries, alternative, if I can speak. Alternative energy for town-owned facilities and public awareness and education on wetlands. So in this context of these topics, are there other things you think we should be considering or doing? Have we missed anything? Anyone? Oh, you want to walk around?
There we go.
I'll give you that. I'm gonna move away with this.
I don't see anything from Conservation Commission up there, and we had a whole pile of stuff. Maybe there's another page?
We're not done.
Yeah, no problem. I see there's tree replacement policy, but no like active, like hey, plant more trees. I think Enfield's really weak on, in terms of integrating trees and more natural within development. So street trees, street trees really lacking. Just go up the street into Long Meadow, which is I think, you know, an Arbor Day certified, right up Route 5, street trees all along. I mean, they had rough time with the storms, but it's a much nicer area to be in, and that's all it takes sometimes.
I'm gonna work my way around. Anybody over here?
You know, beautification of the whole town, we're destroying our historic buildings. There are no, no sense of beautification, no art, no murals. There, you know, the young people are leaving. That's why probably why, you know, we have college-age son and a lot of their friends, they go to college and they're leaving because there's no incentive to stay. They're going to cities that are vibrant, you know, there's innovation, art. We have a lot of history here and we're destroying it. You know, where do I go when I want to do a mural? You know, all the other, with Hartford, Broadbrook, they do a mural in, they have a concert hall. You know, Little Broadbrook, and we don't have anything like that. You know, when I've gone to the town, I've gone to meetings and then they don't answer my emails. So what does a creative person do when they want to do better for the town? And that is my concern.
I just, one comment, these are all really good ideas. And I see, and maybe I'm getting ahead of the slides here, but again, how do they implement it? I mean, if you look across the street here and you have a distribution center built right on top of the aquifer, you go up to the lakes area and Bacon Road and you see a wetlands. I mean, everything here looks very good, but when it comes to the actual practice, I think it's falling short.
I just wanted to respond to the first, to the prior woman. Those were excellent ideas and I want to thank you. There are kind of some ideas I haven't heard yet. And the creativity stuff is definitely worth. worthwhile for us to consider in the context of this plan, so I'll look into that. For the second gentleman, you're right, this looks really good. It's the practice that becomes really hard and challenging.
I guess I just want to sort of expand a little bit on, in terms of the wetlands and watercourses, and in how that affects the town of Enfield. The town of Enfield has, you know, a relatively flat, you know, topography across, you know, the town in certain areas, and that, you know, some of the wetlands that have been or exist have actually been evolved because of the development around the areas, in terms of, you look at, you know, the ninety-one corridor, how it cut, you know, Enfield in half, and it created, you know, sort of a wetlands boundary on the west side of ninety-one versus the east side of ninety-one. And the fact that, you know, some of this, you know, wetlands, although they're wetlands, you know, I think that if we started looking at, you know, rating the wetlands as being, you know, very important or less important, inferno pools, and the fact that, you know, we have a lot of this land that possibly could be developed with some creative zoning and creative, you know, ways of looking at, you know, I guess modifying, not necessarily modifying wetlands, but replacing, you know, less desirable wetland areas with developable land, and then creating, you know, larger areas of important wetland areas. So I think that, you know, we're missing the boat by just saying, you know, wetlands, and you need people who totally understand how they're integrated, one with the other. And, you know, a lot of that has to do with appointing knowledgeable people to our boards. And the thing is, you know, don't appoint people just because, you know, they're a nephew or cousin, or, you know, a son-in-law or something. It's that, you know, we need to have more educated, knowledgeable people on our boards to make better decisions.
So, I hear you on some of the earlier comments. I mean, I remember, I'm trying to get thoughts conveyed here without getting into a lot of detail, but in kind of what you said, there's a relationship between some of those bullets, that the idea of rating wetlands and quality and functionality then relates to the idea of a guidebook on creation, restoration and mitigation. Other communities have had success with allowing low-value wetlands to be diminished, removed, you know, developed on with very strict mitigation and recreation policies of acquisition of land elsewhere and the creation of, you know, new wetlands. So, I think we can get there, hopefully.
Hi. I noticed, well, the stormwater management, the lake areas, all of our stormwater runoff is directed into the lakes. All the, all the street drains go right into the lake, which is not healthy for that resource, and that might be something that is considered in future planning.
Yeah, that came up at our, I think, our last meeting, and I do have a directive to look more specifically at that. I haven't gotten to it as of late. As a resident of East Hampton, if you're familiar with Lake Poketypug, they've had significant issues with that and so forth, me being a resident of that community. So I'm very aware of it. I wasn't aware of it in the context of your lakes, but will be looking into it further as I further revise the plan, so thank you.
Could I just ask you to go back? You quickly went by a slide that went over how many respondents actually participated in the survey, and do you have a distribution of the ages, income, like, who actually kind of gave this direction?
Yeah, the full survey, which I think is probably available on the P O C D site, I think there's a PDF of the full results. It started, it, the initial portion of it, like, the first eight or nine questions were demographic and socio-economic, so it gave a broke-down, break, broke-down, a breakdown of kind of ages, sex, and some other attributes, so. We do have it, I just don't know it off the top of my head. My recollection, so the question was, is it evenly distributed? Distributed. I think it was even in many ways in the context of like male versus female. I think it was even across age from probably mid to late twenties up to senior, you know, seventies and eighties. But I also know it lacked younger persons, kind of below probably twenty-eight years old. There may have been one or two and so forth, so it had some lackings to it. Overall, I think, if I recall, we were, we were kind of pleased with the distribution, even though it's never perfect, so. Last one, I'm gonna move on to the next slide in the interest of time.
I just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
What do we perceive as our flood risk, as something that we should be actively trying to control and to mitigate? How can we control the climate?
Yeah.
For the new town, and I've heard some of this, but do we think we're in any danger of major flooding or climate change? Are those things we can actually act to protect ourselves from?
Yeah, those are great questions, and they're questions I struggle with every day, and I find them overwhelming, and I also find myself not expert enough in them necessarily to answer them, but I will answer. I think in the context of flooding for a town like Enfield, Connecticut River Valley, extensive floodplains, the Scannick River watershed and so forth, I think there's enough history there to say, yeah, you guys are a pretty flood-prone community, and it needs to be something you pay attention to, and anything you can do through development regulations to reduce peak stormwater runoffs and so forth, to reduce impervious coverages that contribute to runoff, will be beneficial to you moving forward. So that one's much more tangible. The climate one is the one that keeps me kind of up at night and overwhelms my brain when I start thinking about it, because it's very difficult for us to conceptualize climate change. It's the reason why we have so much debate and disagreement over it and so forth, but the fact is, I think it's one of those things where, you know, we have to recognize change and embrace change. Mark Twain was famous for saying, "The only two things that are certain in life are death and taxes." He was right, but he was also wrong. The only other thing that's certain is change. And regardless of what we may argue about or debate related to the causes of climate change, climate change is real. And while, yeah, Enfield on itself, on its own cannot solve it, but if every community in America and across the world throws up their hands and says, "Well, we can't solve it, therefore we shouldn't do anything," then we're never gonna solve it. So I think we need to kind of take baby steps, do the little things that we can, you know, simple as can we reduce energy consumption? Very simple things like insulating your attic can go a long way in reducing energy consumption, you know, going to LED light bulbs, shutting off appliances. I have a, I have a vacation property in northern Maine, and it's amazing, when I unplug the microwave and the television and all those things when we leave versus when I leave them plugged in, a house with no one in it, my energy bill will drop by like seven or eight dollars just on unplugging that microwave with the clock on it. My point being is, there's a lot we can do, and I think as we move forward as communities, as we invest in our facilities, we have to consider those kind of things like energy conservation and so forth. I think the comments from the back corner there about things like, you know, locally-sourced produce and so forth. We're never gonna meet our food needs one hundred percent locally with population size and with the loss of farmland, but we sure can do better at it than we're doing, and I know my habits are guilty of not doing it, but when I do try and do it, just things like, you know, corn, native Connecticut corn in the summertime, the best thing ever. If we could grow it year-round, I'd eat it year-round, but what are those other products in other seasons that I could be consuming that I'm not seeking out? So I think we can work towards it, it's just not easy, and it's baby steps. Hopefully that helps. Oh, it's back to me, sorry. Next slide. So, more of the conservation stuff, some of the open space preservation, hopefully this gets at the people I've displeased, or at least some of it. So, match states, open state protection goal of twenty-one percent. Identify, maintain and acquire open space parcels to protect, preserve and enhance the aesthetics, recreational, ecological functions of natural resources around the Connecticut and Scannick River. Identify high-priority parcels for preservation. Enact PA four ninety benefits for open space. I think below there is a evaluate PA four ninety and make it more farm-friendly under the agriculture. Some of the agriculture things, increase locations around town for community gardens, identify high-priority parcels for preservation. We have a theme kind of running there, whether we're talking open space, whether we're talking natural resources, whether we're talking agriculture, this idea of prioritizing and preserving becomes important. Create farm-friendly regulations, including right-to-farm provisions, and create regulations to encourage and allow agribusiness. Just so you know, various boards and commissions, if I didn't include every single thing you listed when I went through your materials, it doesn't mean I'm ignoring it, it just means I was trying to provide highlights in the context of these bulleted examples. One of the things I recommended is the incorporation of the CROG Natural Hazards Action Plan as part of the P O C D, at least their specific recommendations. So, very quickly, a few comments on open space preservation and agriculture specifically. Anyone?
Where's your heads?
Watch out in the corner.
I have an idea with farmland. I'd love to see us growing healthy food to feed our kids in school instead of having trucked in canned food that's been sprayed with god knows what from somewhere else, and it's, it's old because it's sitting in a can instead of some fresh food. We've got these farms, let's use them.
So locally sourcing products through government. There is, and I don't know much details about it, the owner of Brico's Restaurant in West Hartford, I know, his name's Billy Grant, I know he's done a bunch of stuff, it's this microphone, not that one, I can't go over there, has done a bunch of stuff with the West Hartford Public School System, trying to pair healthy eating and recipes, not necessarily farm-to-table, but creating a more healthy kind of public school system menu that's not reliant on those awful frozen burgers that I ate back in school and loved so much, but...
Just to go back on what Rich was just saying about the open space and conservation, I think we have two projects going on right now in town that touched on what you were talking about mitigating wetlands. I believe the Noble Gas Station did some of that, and the Shaker Pines Fire Station did some of that. And I think we've talked about this when you first came on, Don. I'm very interested in that piece, where we can go around and find out these spots, specifically our industrial park. I mean, that's been, you know, noted for years that it's all undevelopable, undevelopable, but if we can, you know, do those kind of programs, and I think two examples of that right now, like I said, the mobile, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Noble Gas Station and Shaker Pines Fire Department did some creative mitigation, and turning it into areas where people can sit and enjoy and walk around, so I think we should really look at that because the location of our industrial park is ideal, being, you know, where it is next to the highway and access to the airport. So I'd really like to see us focus on that. Thank you. Thank you.
If I may, just, you know, in plans, you know, it's not very sexy when we make a recommendation like, you know, identify and prioritize, it's a cattle-outing activity. It doesn't get a lot of attention, there won't be a ton of fanfare, but some of those little things, I think, become very important, because until you know what you have out there as far as quality, and maybe you'll find, you know, super-high-quality wetlands in your industrial park, and then you have to accept the fact of, ugh, we're not developing that, but maybe you'll find some aren't. But until we do those basic activities that seem mundane and uninteresting, it's hard to make those decisions, so I share your comments and just kind of encouragement back to the community, that those are really important things to engage in, because they help answer questions and they help us move forward. Next slide. Moving on to housing, these got refined after some feedback, maybe softened a little bit after some feedback, but residential development, encourage and provide housing and affordable housing. I'm gonna come back to the affordability stuff in a minute. Allow multifamily housing in the BR, the BP, in the I-1 zoning districts. This is related to kind of a shift we've seen overall in the marketplace, and it's related to kind of the discussions that have gone on in this community around the Enfield Square Mall property. The pairing of multifamily with especially retail, or the replacement, if you think of Etna Middletown, with that corporate facility going away and being replaced with multifamily housing, that there's this growing recognition, acceptance, whatever you want to call it, of utilizing multifamily residential within commercial zoning districts where feasible, plausible, and a good idea, not just randomly anywhere. Those three zoning districts in the community kind of makes sense. Ironically, I think in my mind, at one point when I was kind of looking at land uses and future opportunities, that the I-1 out in this part of the town being, you know, suitable maybe for residential development at certain densities, maybe there's some irony in that with recent concerns over the industrial development, but I think finding that balance and finding the places where it works, utilizing incentives when need is demonstrated to encourage housing or affordable housing. The fact is, especially with things like the redevelopment of an Enfield Square Mall, it's not always straightforward that it's easy to finance and redevelop. With a place like the Enfield Square Mall, you have to assume any redevelopment plan's gonna include demolition of portions of the building. Those demolition costs add substantially to the overall project costs, and therefore it can be very hard to pencil out the development financially and economically, and sometimes communities have to participate. I believe you guys have used abatements previously, but in recent times, I've seen West Hartford, Manchester, East Hartford, Weathersfield, Bloomfield, and others use tax abatements on multifamily developments where they realized that, A, they wanted the development, but B, the participation was needed to make the redevelopment typically actually happen. On the affordable housing stuff... On the affordable housing stuff, you guys, under what's called 8-30G, the State Affordable Housing Appeals Legislation, it basically says if a community has less than 10% of their housing is affordable, they're subject to the state law provision that allows developers to circumvent zoning, provided they develop affordable housing. I can't remember specifically, but you're over the 10%, you're 11-point-something percent, so you're not subject to 8-30G. However, you still have to plan for and provide for affordable housing. Last year, the zoning statutes were changed to kind of assert that more so. And there's something that's gone kind of unnoticed that I feel compelled to mention, and that's why I'm going on this little tangent. While we focused on those changes, we, just me and communities in general, focused on those changes about things like you can't have minimum floor areas in zoning anymore, or the mandatory accessory dwelling units unless you opt out. All those things got a lot of attention while a little sentence got none. And the zoning statutes now say that zoning must affirmatively forward fair housing. That is a huge legal shift in the zoning system. While our zoning laws have always said we have to provide for low and moderate income housing and that we have to encourage it, the move to the affirmatively forward fair housing is a huge jump in legal terms. That, so if you allow single-family residential as-of-right, site plan, zoning permit, whatever, and multifamily as of special, via special permits, I think an argument can be made, I'm confident I could make the argument, that that difference, one is as-of-right, one is conditional, is not affirmatively forwarding fair housing. Each community is going to have to figure out what they need to do by themselves, for themselves, and how they're going to deal with this. But my point being is, I think the next kind of issue in land use, or the next thing we're going to see, is a lot of fair housing cases related to zoning and housing that the statute has now allowed for direct fair housing claims to be taken. I think we need to pay attention to that when planning for housing in communities. So economic development, remove barriers to investment, especially on the redevelopment side. As you guys already know, you have some challenging sites that have had vacancies, both in the corporate office kind of sector and also in the retail sector. Those are going to persist, so the need to, you know, allow for or encourage redevelopment, I think, is there. Encourage greater density and diversity of land uses. This is really a statement about mixed use, that maybe sites like Enfield Square Mall do have a future as mixed use scaled back, commercial retail, with the addition of things like multifamily. Once again, kind of that provide incentives to overcome high costs of redevelopment. You guys have already adopted taxing from financing districts. Actually, you guys were right out in front on that, as one of the first communities, I think, to adopt those, I give you credit for that. Traditional tax abatements should probably be considered also. And establish well-defined economic development program. I think at the end of the day, for any community, you know, I'm not saying you're not doing a good job at economic development by making a comment like that. What I'm saying is, if you're serious about it, you have to work at it, and you have to constantly work at it. And, oh, I don't want to switch yet. That's not also just me saying that you sacrifice everything for economic development. It gets back to, how do we balance these conservation, preservation needs with these development needs, whether they be residential or economic development? Distribution centers have happened, they probably will happen in the future. You know, to what extent, that's up to you guys, you know, you can decide that. Through what processes, you can decide that. You need jobs, you need tax revenue and so forth, but you also don't want to sacrifice the farmlands, the scenic vistas and so forth and so on, or harm your lakes. It's how do we find that balance? And that's the challenge of sustainability. How do we maintain the world we exist in that balances social, economic, and environmental issues? So any further thoughts, anything I missed here, or comments you want to make about residential housing and economic development?
On the housing, are we looking at height, number of stories, specifically more towards the Thompsonville area, possibly a mixed-use development in the mall area? I believe we're at five stories now, I think. Just wondering if we're taking a peek at that.
You know, as we started working on the zoning regulations, I'm struggling to remember a specific discussion around height. I can go back and look at my notes, we haven't really discussed it in the context of the plan. So let me pose a question back to you, and so you threw out five stories there. Is your thought five stories is too high or too low? I'm just curious.
For the specific areas I'm talking about, too low.
Too low, okay.
Yes, I think, especially if, you know, we can gain access to the riverfront and do something along the riverfront, it would be nice to have something a little higher than that. Bigelow Commons on building one, I believe, at the back end is like six stories.
Is it?
Because it dips down. So in that area, possibly in the mall area, but not for, obviously, for the whole community, where it fits. I think we have the infrastructure, we have the water supply for fire protection, so I think in the areas where it would fit in, I think that was something we should look at, but I think five is too small in some areas, only because of, again, we're talking about land. So if we go up, we're using less.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and something I'll definitely explore. Anyone else?
Just a comment on that, I think that that's a great idea to go up rather than, you know, increasing the footprint on, since Enfield is basically wetlands all over. But just remember that when you go to up so high, you might need new fire trucks, new fire stations to house those fire trucks. Mr. Alamo, you're, as a former fire chief, do you know what our trucks can handle at this time?
We have plenty of aerials.
How, how high are they?
We have more than enough equipment because the fire protection systems will also be implemented. The latter, the latter, we're going to go up to the sixth or seventh story, no matter what.
So seven, seven's our max right now?
Seven, you could reach.
Okay. That's good to know, thank you.
We have plenty of, plenty of fire.
That's for sure.
Under economic development, I think there should be a moratorium on any developer that wants to put in a warehouse. South Windsor just implemented it, and it's good for a year. I mean, everybody knows here about the two Winstanley warehouses and the monstrosity they are, and South Windsor is going through the same thing. And they, they got this moratorium for a year. I attended a meeting last night on it, and I'd like to see that happen in this town.
Thank you. And I think that's something, Laurie, I think Lou had his hand up. Oh, go ahead, Lou, sorry.
First of all, I recognize your comment, thank you very much. Don, I want to thank you very much for dipping into the affordable housing. Before we leave, I just saw people really understanding, even the ones that are watching on TV here, could you expand on that a little bit more because that might bring some changes here by state statute that we're going to have to implement here in Enfield over the next few years. But I want to thank you for bringing it up at all and actually explaining it fairly well, thank you.
I'll do it.
Hi, I was going to say the same thing about looking into a moratorium, just to kind of give us time to think about alternatives, maybe, reusing an empty building, repurposing, putting in an industrial park area, and also maybe one large development at a time, you know, give it time to cycle through so we can see all the effects of one before we start another. And lastly, thinking, how can technology help us? Like, can we, it's hard to visualize things when you look at it on paper, you can't see the breadth of it, and with ArcGIS and some programs, or maybe CAD programs, you could design 3D visuals of what we have now, what proposals, it might, might give us better insight if we could actually look at it to scale in a three-dimensional view.
Okay, thank you. Just on the moratorium, I think at the end of the day, there's probably going to be action internal with the town and possibly PZC, I don't want to put words in their mouth, quicker than this plan will ever address it. There's other ways through either a text amendment or through a moratorium. So we hear you, I get it. That recommendation's not ending up in the plan because it's probably going to be resolved before the plan actually gets resolved itself, so just so everyone knows. Oh, yes, sir, sorry.
Yeah, commenting on the second and third bullets on the residential development side, the multifamily housing specifically calls out the business zones, so I think mixed, mixed-use, I'm a big proponent of mixed-use zoning, but I'll add to smaller-scale multifamily development within existing residential neighborhoods are perfectly within, within reason, ranging from, you know, accessory apartments to duplexes, triplexes, things like those. Again, fit entirely within the design of existing neighborhoods. And as far as the next bullet about mixed-use development, it specifically calls out business zones, and I'll add to the potential to look at residential zoning, smaller-scale businesses, allowing smaller-scale, whether home businesses or just other small-scale businesses, grocery stores, corner stores, convenience stores, very beneficial to residential areas. Don't need a huge footprint either.
Yep, thank you, appreciate that. So just quickly on, as you walk over there, on the affordable housing legislation, this is where I see kind of the change in zoning moving forward, is previously, so the zoning statute said that we had to encourage and promote and provide multifamily housing and housing for low and moderate income households. Even though the language was kind of, I'll say squishy, good legal term, you know, promote, encourage, maybe provide being more directive, but there was case law that clearly said those were directives from the legislature and that they were mandates, we were supposed to do that. Now, I'm not picking on you guys. Just on a statewide level, most communities didn't actively do that. We, in most communities, made it more difficult for multifamily, for rental, for affordability. And, but while there was a fair housing claim to possibly be had, the legal argument, the building the case against municipality of violating fair housing, previously, I think, was very challenging to do, and therefore you didn't see it. Now that that line's been inserted into zoning that says zoning must affirmatively forward fair housing, now that argument, I think, becomes very easy. If you're not doing things to affirmatively encourage multifamily, affordable housing in general, if your regulations are doing things to make it more difficult, as I use the example, as-of-right for single-family, special permit for multifamily, I think the fair housing argument becomes much easier. So I think what we're going to see in the near future is zoning applications that get denied for housing, previously just went to the trial courts for a zoning matter, you know, was the commission legitimate in their rationale in designing, denying the application? And if they weren't, it gets remanded back to here again, or there's a negotiated settlement. I think now what we're going to see is we're going to see the zoning appeal, and we're going to see a fair housing appeal, and probably into the federal courts. And that's a different outcome. That's now the remanded back, that's, if you're found noncompliant, that could be actual civil penalties and fines levied against municipality. So I think we've kind of entered a new era of really having to take housing seriously in a way we haven't had to in the past. So hopefully that answers your question as a more detailed answer to it.
Can somebody, could an applicant put that type of housing into a zoning area that's not properly zoned, just for that?
No.
Because the zoning comes first, correct?
You can still do your, you know, segregated use districts, but the whole thing is, let's say you just, you zone the whole town for single-family and no multifamily, then you're probably not forwarding fair housing. So it's not trumping zoning.
Okay, that's what I was concerned about.
In the way that 8-30G does, if you have less than 10%, so no.
That's what I was concerned about.
Yep.
Okay, I guess for me, I'm having a confusion on this. Why are we equating affordable housing with multifamily housing? We have plenty of single-family homes that are just as affordable as multifamily homes could be. And when we encourage multifamily homes, we better darn well encourage that we have owner-occupied, because a lot of our problems stem from multifamily homes, not owner-occupied, everybody's blind, nobody knows what's going on. So I guess for me, I'm having, I'm, we're painting this picture here, and all of a sudden I've got mud here, and I don't understand how this equation is coming in.
So I think, there's a few ways that it's coming in. One is if you look at Connecticut as a whole, and then you look at individual communities, but Connecticut as a whole is disproportionately built as single-family detached housing. I think statewide, it's, just hear me out, just hear me out, 65, 66% single-family versus less percents of multifamily, five or more. Number two then being, and on the local level, and forgive me if I'm wrong, I think you guys are over 70%, I think you might be over 75% single-family residential. So you're leaning even more towards that single-family. Historically, we did build a lot of multifamily up until about the 80s, and then we kind of stopped for various reasons. The interesting thing, though, is, one, from an affordability perspective, from a financial feasibility perspective, it's really difficult to build an affordable single-family house. Try and build an affordable single-family house, say, and that meets the affordability requirement, is near impossible. I won't say it's impossible, it's near impossible. It's easier to do it because there's efficiencies of scale through multifamily. Also, the percent of land value into Also, the percent of land value into each unit is less on the multifamily side. But the other thing is just the interesting shift in demographics and housing market. So if we go back to 2005 Connecticut, only about twenty-two percent of housing permits issued each year were multifamily, the rest were a single-family. Over the past five to seven years, we've been averaging around forty-seven percent of all new building permits, housing permits issued, being multifamily. The market has shifted. We don't have as large a families, we have more single persons than ever. The fact is, there's more people out there looking for multifamilies and rental units than there ever has been before. So I can debate the merits, we can debate the merits of whether or not you want renters or all that, but my response is just kind of, you know, at the end of the day, that's where the housing market has shifted to, and some communities are grabbing at it and prospering at it, and other communities are resisting it. Each community has to make their own choice. My general feeling is, you know, you want the new housing, the new investment. Most of the multifamily products out there, statewide and also in Enfield, is thirty-plus years old, just from an amenities standpoint. It's kind of challenging in that it doesn't meet the modern consumer needs. It's the idea, we have to kind of constantly be upgrading our housing stock, and I know that's a struggle, so.
Yeah, but it's just that sometimes rent is more expensive if you have someone who owns their own home and pays taxes and pays it.
Definitely.
And that's why I'm getting the disconnect from the utility thing. I mean, it's something to throw out, you know, you don't have to.
Right. So new market rate rental properties, a two-bedroom, brand-new market rate rental is probably going to cost as much as a mortgage on a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot house in the rent, you know. Big portion of that's taxes, just as you know, your mortgage payment, big portion is taxes. The, the difference is, you can actively require affordable components. So I think West Hartford on most of their multifamily developments require ten percent of the units to be at eighty percent AMI. So then you get an affordable product. And just so you know, eighty percent of AMI is not low-income housing, you know, median income in the Hartford area is ninety-six thousand dollars, so eighty percent AMI comes in at like seventy-five thousand dollars, and I just told you, your median household income is seventy-six thousand dollars. So it's right in there at the price point of what your housing is, your market is, so. I don't want to belabor, we can talk more about affordable housing another time if you wish, so.
Okay.
Sure.
May I? And I want to, I'm going to actually stand up because I want to see faces rather than backs of heads, I hope you don't mind, but I'm going to pick up on Donna's point about affordable homes and just say, there have been a number of projects where the likes of Oak Ridge National Labs partners with builders associations and designs super-energy-efficient, replicable house designs that get out there into the market somewhat, but builders are resistant to change and they do what they know, and so that's an example of innovation that's out there that we're not capturing. And what I wanted, I'm going to be as tight as I can here, but I'm going to respond to the woman who asked the question about climate change, and to Donna's comment about change tolerance in general, and the comment about food, and the discussion we've had about wetlands and land use, because I think they're all related. And I think, so ninety-nine percent of the scientific community believes that climate change is caused by combusting fossil fuels, methane emissions from farms and landfills, and refrigerant chemicals, and that we have to reduce those things fast. They were setting 2020 as the target for peaking and starting to reduce. Now, the latest intergovernmental panel report said 2024. Yes, our country is divided, and that's sad and unfortunate, but in public opinion, sixty-plus percent of people are concerned or alarmed, and about five percent don't believe it. And so I believe those of us who are feeling somewhat concerned should understand that we are a majority and act like one, and embrace the creativity that comes with that. And that touches the train station and transit-oriented development, it touches, you know, farm-to-table, not just a little bit, do it a lot. A few days ago, I was in a really innovative solar-energothermal-powered greenhouse designed by an architect colleague and replicated by another architect colleague that I know that uses ten percent the energy of a conventional greenhouse for year-round architecture, or year-round agriculture, I'm as tired as you are. And, you know, it's ready to be built in many more places, and it's an example. We have a community college, lots of educational, lots of two-year schools are growing to be four-year schools, they're making business plans to do that. You know, we could, there are lots of ways we could invest in the innovation to deal more aggressively with climate and, you know, all of the different sort of environmental crises and turn them into economic development. And so I hope we do.
Thank you.
Hi.
Oh.
I have one.
Sure.
Piece of input. Some of you guys may know me from the planning office, hi, I'm Georgie. And I can't remember if we talked about this or not from the last year, Donald, but just something I want to pick your guys' brains about, kind of touches upon some similar things you guys were bringing up about population increase and decline, and affordability for local businesses and homeowners, but Airbnb's right now are not allowed in Enfield, and with our new changes that we're bringing up in our future zoning regs and our new POCD, Airbnb's can produce a lot of economic benefits. It can encourage mixed use, encourage visitors, encourage young, young population, benefit locally-owned businesses, and would benefit the train station. So just something else to think about in regards to housing and renting.
Thank you. So in the interest of time, because, I'll be honest, I don't like sitting through movies that go more than two hours, and now we're at two hours and six minutes. I've had the benefit of standing, you guys have had to sit through it, and I apologize for that. We also made recommendations related to community facilities. The biggest and primary recommendation for community facilities is, you guys as a community really need to do a comprehensive community facilities plan. You have structures like this that are kind of meeting some needs but kind of floundering, they're large, they're costly, you have things kind of disjointed around, and you have a lot of deferred maintenance. So I think this is an area that needs a comprehensive look beyond what the POCD can actually do. Infrastructure, honing in on but still working on sidewalks, bike circulation, impervious surfaces, and ultimately, maintenance. I want to give you guys credit, I know you guys get a lot of complaints on social media about your awful roads. You guys actually have a really good roads program, and you go out to bonding every so many years, and you do so many miles and so forth. You're running about as good of a roads program as you can possibly run. That being said, you know, lots of traffic, and, you know, it's a constant challenge to keep up with the roads, but that is an area where I'd say on infrastructure, you guys are actually doing well even though you always get beat up over it. Sustainability, more recommendations, and I want to thank Melissa for her assistance with this, I'm still working through these, these later portions, but on energy conservation, security, affordability, related to kind of climate change, water conservation, and waste reduction and recycling. So with that said, I'm going to say at this point, if you have further comments, further input you'd like to provide to us, please feel free to email Lori, the director of Planning and Community Development, and she will definitely forward those on to me so that they don't burden her day, and I'll get a look at them. So what I'm saying is, we're, we're still available for comments even though I'm wrapping this up, and if you want to bend my ear for a couple minutes, once I say goodbye here, you're welcome to. But with that, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight, I want to thank you for your input. And I want to thank the steering committee and Planning and Zoning Commission for their efforts on this, and we'll keep you informed as we continue through this process, so thank you.
Thank you, ET, Mary. Thank you.